We're meeting everybody. I'd like to call the special meeting of the neighborhood Commission to order. Where this is October 17th, Thursday, and we're at shortly after six o'clock, ten after six. So we'd like to get this meeting started, right? I'd like to go over the rules of speaking first. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise his or her hand and when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Speakers are to keep their comments under two minutes. Public testimony taken on each agenda will be taken on each agenda either. Please sign off on your electronic devices. Or the folks that are on Zoom tonight, on web based, please raise your hands using the raise hand function on your computers. Also, if you could, it would be helpful for the chair. You could identify yourself, put in your first and last name on the screen. That would be helpful if you raise your hand and I can follow in the event where, you know, people with the same name. So it's very helpful when we're running the meeting. So I'd like to start off by calling all. But before I do, we have the need for five members to form, and we have four, and one is should be coming online shortly. So then can we call the votes?
Yes. Berdahl.
Here.
Shane. Clark. Loeb. Melendrez. Oshiro.
Here.
Smith. Tamamoto. Varan.
Present.
All right, we do have four, one shot and done, Jack. Okay. So we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is public concerns. If anyone has a public concern, please limit your speaking to two minutes. And this item is for items that are not on the agenda. So is there anyone wishing to speak and have a public concern with items not on the agenda this evening? I see one hand raised in the audience. Let me know if there's anybody else online that raises their hands. Could you please come up to the table here and identify yourself and tell us what your concern is?
And the mic is right here, so you can just project your voice towards us.
If you're going to speak at this chair, my mic can close to my mic. As you can, we have a speaker.
My name is Antonio Vera. I was the maintenance supervisor for K&amp;I Anna Apartments in Waikiki. I'm here to make a statement on behalf of Mr. Greg Mesakian. Yes, forgive me at times I mispronounce people's.
That relates to the petition we have.
Yes, it is relating to the petition.
So this part is to take, if there are any public concerns or items not on the agenda, that is on the agenda. So we'll ask for any comments later before we get to that item on the agenda.
Okay, so, but I can bring up concerns other related, is that what it is?
Is it related to the petition?
It's not related to this petition, but it's related to the building I worked at.
It's related.
Relating to the building I worked at. Previous employment to the building I worked with, we involved some of the people that's not, wasn't involved.
You have to, just hear what you have to say.
So basically, I was a supervisor manager for K&amp;I Anna. Basically, I am aware that the board members are the ones that had submitted a proposal or petition before this committee to have an individual in the board removed. So my concern was bring to the board's attention of the questionable behavior and nature of the individuals involved pertaining to.
Sir, here, it sounds like you're talking about petitions. Can I ask you, are you talking about what's in the petition in terms of the recall of the?
In a way, speaking, yes.
Or?
In a way, speaking, yes.
It is, if it is, can you hold your comments till later when we get to that item on the agenda?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Chair, let's see, I have other hand.
Just to let you know, Patrick Smith did just join, so yeah.
Thank you. We'll note that our fifth commissioner is here, so we do have forum at this point in fact that we're, that are meeting. So I see a hand up, myself, you sit down and identify yourself and tell us what your concern is.
Aloha, my name is Sarah Kimworth, and normally I come before this commission and I testify just as an individual. But today, I, I feel like I'm also going to testify as being a member of the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. I'm going to speak to my experience. So as we know, neighborhood plan, everyone knows, like, this is our bible, basically. This is our rule book. This is our guide. It tells us what we can, cannot do. But as my judge used to always say, you know, rules and laws are just words on paper, powerless unless they're enforced. And so my concern is, is that who enforces these rules? Like, if a board member has a violation on these pages, to whom do I turn? And I've been coming here for over a year now, and these are the questions I've been asking. Who do I turn to? Who do I talk to? Who do I make sure that this doesn't happen month after month? And when I joined the Waikiki Neighborhood Board over a year ago, I had these questions that I brought, and my first experience, of course, is people make mistakes. We're all human, so I try to go to the person first, and let's talk it out, let's correct it. But what problem is, if someone doesn't want to talk to you, who do you turn to them? And where do I go? So my first thought as I went to the NCO, when I spoke with Executive Secretary Lloyd Yanaka, and he actually initially discouraged me from filing complaints. You know, OIP takes a year to get ruling, you know, we've already got, NCOs already got a lot on their plate. So then I actually came towards the commission, and a lot of issues I had, I'm like, what do I do? I don't want this to happen month after month. It's an issue. And I was referred back to Lloyd, I'm sorry, Executive Secretary Yanaka. So when I approached him again, he said, I can't provide you guidance, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, you know, say anything. I got to file a complaint. And my thing is, I don't want to file a complaint. What if this is just human error? What if we're making mistakes? I've made mistakes. Luckily, some of the commissioners have actually provided some guidance, and I'd be grateful for it because I am new, I am learning. So unfortunately, I then looked at the neighborhood plan, I was like, oh, great, there's another option. I can, you can present a question to corporate counsel. I don't have to file a complaint. The commission or the NCO can put questions to corporate counsel, and corporate counsel can answer it. When I gave the suggestion last time at the commission meeting, I was told once again, it's just, I have to file a complaint. We're not going to submit to the commission, but corporate counsel, you have to file a complaint. So unfortunately, I've now, I've now filed three complaints. One of them was in August. Last, last meeting, I asked, is there a timeframe? I have family coming in for a month. Like, kind of, I don't know if I have any plans, like, where are you at in this process? My only response was, you'll have, you'll have plenty of time, which is not an answer, an answer, especially with the holidays coming up. So my concern today is, I know, I'm very grateful that the commission is, oh, my rock. I'm, I know the neighborhood plan is very vague about things, and I'm grateful that the commission is taking it on and working to fix it and write it. But my concern right now is, it's been unprecedented how many complaints there are. And unfortunately, the only avenue given for guidance is to file complaints. I hope that this commission and the three in the neighborhood plan can change that. I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. I see one more hand.
Right, Chair, who's the commission?
Who's that?
Oh, you're able. So my name is Greg Mesakian, or Gregory is my legal name. And, yeah, excuse me, too, I just recently lost my father, just a couple of weeks ago, and I lost my mother last year, so this is a little bit difficult for me because I know I'm going to speak on the petition during the petition item on agenda, but tonight's about me, it seems like. The special meeting is called especially for me. So now I'll discuss concerns unrelated to the petition, but how I think the origins of the petition. And it's a concern, because as we sit here in this room, and you all look around this room, you look behind me, and you look at some other people on Zoom, we have a number of our board members who like to be near the board here. What Sarah just said to you a moment ago regarding concerns that we bring concerns to the table, she and I have tried on many occasions to address concerns directly with Chair Penley. Violations of the neighborhood plan, concerns with the sunshine law, the forum, procedural things that were going on in meetings. We all had concerns. It was her, I, and some other people, too. No, we tried. I was formerly sub-district two vice chair. I was nominated to be that, actually, right after my mom passed away. It was the first time I was in the position in July. And everything was good until I started to see bad things happening on that board. And routinely, we've come to Lloyd, we've come to the commission meetings, too, but we've come to Lloyd and we've spoken to him. And we've been forced, unfortunately, to go to OIP, and OIP has given opinions. And on July 9th, Dylan, right here, came to our meeting because OIP gave a written opinion informal regarding items on the agenda that were improperly agenda at that meeting. Sunshine law violations clear without a doubt. And that, our, and that is when everything began, as far as I believe this petition, this, this particular petition. There seemed to be an outrage at that meeting that somebody had raised a concern, and on that email was my name. I had raised a concern, I didn't file an official complaint. And so that's the beginning of it. And this was referred to me as a lynch mob by people who were texting the email. So we'll get to that in a.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dylan, is there anyone else online that has concerns? I'll see any others in the audience. So we're going to move on to the next item on tonight's agenda, which is the executive secretaries before.
My staff is telling me to protect my voice.
And Lloyd, when you finish what you want to say with your report, well, go ahead. Yeah, I'll explain the next part of the.
Well, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to let this board, this commission know that I will be having a meeting with the chairs and vice chairs. I've had this meeting before, just so that everybody is okay. It is not a sunshine law violation because I'm just meeting with a person or two people. And we're not going to talk about, they're not going to talk about board really much. But I really wanted to just talk to them because there are some changes that I think were coming down, and actually, they're coming down now, as a result of OIP receiving some concerns about agendas and what is proper and not proper. I got an email, I got a copy of the email, and I think the, I think Billy, that copy too, was sent to him, that their agenda items were not according to OIP standards. So I asked OIP a number of questions. And basically, what I wanted, well, what are your standards? What is a law? So they wrote me a long letter, sent it out to the chairs a couple of days ago, I was going to send it out to all the board members tomorrow. And it does change the way things will happen at the board level. And I can give you just a brief, because I haven't digested everything, but it's very brief. If you have a, or to OIP, if you have a section that says police, you know, first we found that the police is listed, so they give you a report of what's happening in the evening. If it's not specific on exactly what they're talking about, at that point, the board cannot ask questions, cannot talk to it. The public can, but the board members cannot. They can only talk about it if it is specific on that agenda. So it does change. And again, this is what I read, this is what I got from there. We think, we're still digesting some of it, but I just want to talk to the chairs because it does affect their. Anyway, it is, that's basically my report, and, and, you know, you guys are, I think I copied you on some of the, some of the stuff, so.
So I take it, Lloyd, that this matter is still evolving?
It is evolving, and, and, you know, it's, it's, we have this opinion from them, we have this directive, but it's not like I told all the board from now on, this is exactly how it has to be. I, I want to have a discussion. Obviously, every board has a, has an agenda that's a little different. You're trying to read into OIP stuff for where we can function, because we are so used to having a police report and having an open discussion, which I thought was the, the point of the board system. But according to OIP, if it's not specifically listed on the agenda as an item, then you shouldn't be talking. However, what's interesting is the public can always talk about. The other part that was also, and that's the last part, the other one, the other part that OIP, in their letter said was, the practice of a board member testifying in the public concern section is not enough. And I know a lot of board members, and not necessarily every board, but a lot of board members like to get up from their seat and say, I'm going to testify in the public section as a member of the public. And OIP says you can't do it. A board member cannot testify as a member of the public. It is, again, we are digesting some things right now, so I just want to, by November 4th, pretty good idea, and, you know, I'll have a nice chat with the chairs. But just letting you know, there probably will be some changes.
I'm sure that there's also going to be a lot of questions.
Yes, yes.
So I say this is right. Evolving. I see Larry, Larry stand up, Larry?
Yes, yeah, Lloyd, I, I read that letter, and, you know, I understand there, there are reasons for some of the things that OIP put in there, and I totally support, especially, you got to let the public know why there's going to be a specific presentation, why the board is taking action, and all these things. But I have one serious concern. When it comes to public safety, I can't muzzle my board when HPD, and we've had, you know, when you have late breaking news on issues, and the police officers there that the board wants to engage them on, I, I have some issues in that. But I'll wait, save that for when you get to chair's meeting, but I just want to put it on record that I personally have some concerns with it.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. And, and I agree, you know, what happens a lot of times is that they come out with something or a position, and it prompts more questions. And then they respond, and it prompts even more questions. I mean, that's kind of a, the nature of, of the way we look at things and discuss things. So I'm, again, I'm still digesting some of it. But, but before I, you know, and before I meet with the chair, the chairs, I just would like to get a little bit more understanding. But I will tomorrow send it out to all board members. And I'm sure I'll have a lot of, a lot of questions, but it is, it is something that came in from the OIP.
Thank you, Lloyd, thank you, Chair.
More questions from the commission? I don't see any from the audience, I see one hand up, very good question for most of.
Very specific to this report, the executive secretary, not interested. So in this folder, I have a lot of folders here, I don't know how many you'll get for tonight. But in this folder, I have actually an OIP opinion for this evening even, because I was kind of curious about the way this was on the agenda, this petition, but I'll save that, that there was a concern with that, which was validated. So I mentioned earlier that it was the July 9th OIP opinion, and that was what Executive Secretary Yanaka.
Do you have a question? Great. What? Are you making a statement?
I will have a question.
Why is it a question?
I will have, I will have a question, but I need to lead into what I'm saying to get to the question. Am I allowed to speak?
Proceed.
Thank you. So on the OIP opinion from July 9th, which was about agenda items and how they're agendized, and the public's ability to know what the issues are, so that they can be understanding if they want to participate in the meeting and provide testimony is the concern, that's what he was referring to. But there's an additional email. And so that email, which Executive Secretary Yanaka was just referring to, was not provided to all of the board members, but some of the board members initially. And that's an additional opinion. And so I know he said he's going to be submitting it to the whole board, but I'm just curious why select board members were given this prior. So that's my question. Why select board members were given this, which I'm holding in my hand, and I have a copy of directly from OIP, and not all of the board collectively at the same time, so we can be aware of it? And this is dated back September 30th, is the response back from OIP to you.
Yeah, September 30th, I didn't get it until, or we're something. The letter is dated September 30th, but I get it to the 9th or something. But anyway, I can, I can just explain.
It says it'd be an email, but that's.
Correct. But what is, I sent it to the chair, the vice chair, I didn't send it to any board members. The reason is, I wanted to have a meeting with them, and wanted to give this to them and have them read it, because I want to talk about it, because I know as soon as it goes out, they're going to have questions from different. So I just wanted them to respect it. And my, my, my plan right now is just send, I'm going to send it out to everybody. But I just wanted the chairs and vice chairs to have it, at least ahead of them.
So that was my first question to OIP. I said, was this just sent to the chairs? And they said, no, there was regular board members that also were received.
Well, I didn't send it to them, they may have, but.
Yeah, so they forwarded it. But the thing is, and, and they, unless there was instruction given or not given, once you release it to the chairs and you don't give instruction, they can then forward it. But my thing is, it should have been communicated. If you're going to communicate it, let's be, let's be transparent. That's my concern. So that was my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see one more hand. Chair?
Sarah worth, Sarah Kimworth has. I guess now it's because of individual, I wasn't planning a speaking in it, but.
This is, we're still on the.
Oh, yes. Exactly, this is exactly what I'm going to address, Sarah. Because I actually, I'm concerned that not everyone received it, and I don't believe the commission received this letter. So you actually read the letter? They gave you examples of how. So my question is, I guess I have those, I'll phrase it as a question, I feel like I'm in jeopardy, how can I phrase this as a question? My question is, why wasn't it given to everyone? And why, why are, like, they give answers of how to get around this? Why aren't you providing that, making it seem like this is some sort of, they're not going to let us do this, we're like, something the board can't talk to? They give you ways around of how to phrase this on agenda so that board can speak. So I, I don't want this to be an alarmist moment, since only a few of the chairs and vice chairs, and I don't completely realize, like, we have a number of attorneys on our board, I know, I am one, Jacob, so, in the future, I just don't want the board or the commission to, or anyone out there in Zoom land, WebEx land, to be alarmed. Please wait, let's read the letter. And they actually provide solutions, so I just ask for the future that things such as this, you provide it to all members, especially when you have, have free, like, legal attorneys here. I'm normally charged quite a bit per hour, but I'm willing to do it for free. Follow.
Okay, yeah, because I think Lloyd already answered that question, asked a state question, so you don't have to work to that. Online, is that Larry? Has it, Larry, is your hand still up?
I'm sorry, I got, I didn't see if my hand was still up, apologizing.
Kevin live, man, Kevin, you have the floor? Kevin, you're muted. You're muted.
Thank you, thank you, team. I'm wondering if it is simply a trivial exercise for anyone on the board to ask a member of the audience, either in presence or online, to mention a word or key phrase, which would then permit discussion by a board member of a topic? Is, I mean, if that's all it takes, is this much ado about nothing? Thank you.
Um, maybe I can just, I don't know, Kevin. I mean, I mean, that was part of what I wanted to understand better. Yes, I think that is a way that it can proceed, but I just got to have a discussion internally on that. But yes, possibly.
Thank you.
I, I don't see any answer from the audience or online, so we're going to proceed to the next item on our agenda, which is new business, and it relates to a petition, we recall the Waikiki Neighborhood Board, and secondly, a review of Neighborhood Plan Section 217-404, relating to recall of board member. Before we begin this, I want to ask Lloyd Yanaka, our executive secretary, to provide his report on this matter, because they did, we do the petition basically to determine some of the requirements that are contained in Neighborhood Plan Section 217-404 regarding whether the petition is valid or not. Then after that, I'll ask the board to, for a motion to either accept or reject the petition. So Lloyd, can you proceed?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I think, I think everyone here can all agree that, first of all, the neighborhood plan has, does not have enough clarity at times. I think, I think that's just understood. But I just want to go through this really quickly and get to what I wanted to really talk about. One is, I just want to read this from the plan. A board member may be removed by recall initiated by the commission upon the filing of a petition signed by the lesser of 5% of 100 of the registered voters within the board members respective for district or sub-district as applicable in the last held board election for that area. So basically, you can turn, you can collect the names. And what's interesting is, while it starts with that, the requirement for the commission is really, it, all it says is, you need to validate the names, that the names seem to be accurate. And that's the word you seem to be accurate, and we did not get the, but getting back to that, when, so when we look at, when I look at this, and when we looked at, and we reviewed it, the lesser of 5% of 100 registered, of the registered voters within that district, 5% works out to about 86 voters. I mean, there's, there's like 1,700 people in that, in that district, according to our, our numbers. So it's either 86 or 100. I mean, that is the lesser of the, of that. So the, the threshold is 86. So we've looked at it from that perspective. We need to get to at least 86 to make sure that this petition is valid. We went through every name, and we, what we found, and what we validated and verified is that we can, we can verify 42 names, and that's all. Okay? And the reason, part of the reason is, and, and I don't want to speculate, because I think there is an affidavit that says, yes, everything to my, my knowledge is true. I don't think there's anything wrong with the petition, I don't think anybody lied. I think there's a lot of stuff in there. A lot of things happened in two years. People may not have, may, may not be in the same place, they may have moved, people may have changed their name. And there are people that says, yes, I voted, I'm in the last election, or yes, I'm registered, but they're not. So the challenge for us was trying to correlate all of that information and verify that there was actually 86 names that, that met, met the criteria. And the other challenge is that, while someone may say, I'm, I, I'm registered, they may have been in another area. We, we found basically about three, three names that the address weren't in the district. I mean, they're close, but they weren't really in the, out in the district. But I, but I can tell you right now that when it came to actually validating, verifying the, the requirement that there would be at least 86 people on that petition, or 100, that actually live in that district, were registered voters during that time, two years ago, we can validate 42. We cannot, at this point, validate 86 now. It's possible that, you know, I mean, if we were close, if, if it was five, five names, I think I would ask the commission, can you give us a little more time, dive in a little bit more? But at this point, we've been through it several times, and the best we can come up with at this point is, and 42, and part of it is, is unable to read the name. So, and, and again, I just want to say, the commission's part in all of this, first of all, is validating that the signatures are, are, seem to be right. And I have no doubt that the signatures are from different people. I mean, it's, it is, you cannot, if you look at the signatures, you will, you will agree, yeah, everybody who decided was an individual, and they're not duplicate signatures, but when we look at the numbers and we cross it into our database of who voted in that election, and we decipher the name, again, we cannot, we cannot validate more than 42.
So that's why it happened?
Yeah.
In terms of.
Correct, just when that happened. So, that being said. So, that being said, it is, and again, the, the reason, the whole reason for this meeting is because to go forward in this issue is not a question of what the NCO says. It is all related to what the commission decides. The commission is the one that decides do we, do we go forward or do we not go forward. And basically it's to accept the petition and move forward with recall or to reject. Okay, unless the commissioners, if you have any questions, Lloyd, at this point, after that, I'll ask for a motion from the commission to either accept or reject the petition based on the information that we've been finding. I don't see any questions from the commissioners at this point. So do we have a motion from the commission as to action on this petition at this time? Larry?
Yeah, Chair Shiro, make a motion that we reject the petition.
You, is there a second?
His mention is to. By second.
Okay, so we have a motion to reject by Commissioner Varela and a second by Commissioner Smith. So at this time, I'd like to ask the commission, are there any objections to that motion? Any abstentions? If not, that the vote is unanimous by. You're, you're. Thank you. Okay. Well, it involves recognition of the, of people that are here this evening. I'd like to ask anybody that interfered or wanted to say anything at this point in time after the commission's rejection of this particular petition. I see one, Pat, I'm a great, you want to make a comment? I will leave your, your clocks in two minutes as well.
Absolutely. I respect that. So I appreciate the, the commission's rejection of the petition and actually taking the time to validate or better understand the signatures. So that's always important, especially when someone's reputation is at stake, that the actual work behind there is done. So I do appreciate that. I would like to say, just very quickly, that first I was never notified about the petition against me or that I would be on the agenda this evening at the special meeting of the new commission. The first I heard about this meeting was in a text I received which said, is there a lynch mob underway and referencing the special meeting agenda? Additionally, I got a couple of emails from people using the term lynch mob. When I called the NCO office to speak with Executive Secretary Dwyane Ananaka and asked why I wasn't informed, he stated, the neighborhood plan doesn't require this unless the petition is accepted. I asked him, don't you think it's a simple courtesy to inform the board member that they are on agenda at a meeting? Especially for something of this nature. This is a pretty serious concern. He really didn't have a response to that. He said, it's not in the neighborhood. I said, okay. I also requested to know who the petitioner was, or petitioners, and what the petitioners, excuse me, what the petition stated. I was told that this could not be disclosed. There may be some rule about that. But I do find it curious because, you know, there is chapter 92 dash 7.5, which is the board packet. And I had concerns this evening that the board packet, which is the petition, which I have right there, it's on the table over there, was not provided to the public prior to this meeting. And I did speak with OIP about this. And this should have been available from OIP's opinion that I received today. So I get it when I walk in the door, but the public didn't have it. We have a news reporter here, Allison Schaefer's. I'm being photographed while I sit here. They didn't have it available. The public didn't have it. So, you know, as I mentioned earlier, I just lost my phone. It's a very challenging time. I am concerned that sitting in this room also, the petitioners in the room, but I'm concerned with just the process. But I do want to thank you all for taking the time to look at the signatures better understanding than, than what all valid. And the ones that are probably from my condo association where I'm being dragged through the mud over there, but that's a story that we'll get to another time. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Just, not the signature are valid. It is that, that we cannot relate the person to the order base during that time.
Correct, which is not, not valid, basically.
Well, no, the signature is valid. They just don't qualify to be.
Same, they qualify valid. I, I, I look at.
Valid means the signature is no good. And that's not true.
Um, I mean valid to the petition, but that's, we, we agree to, agree. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there anybody? If you can come up to the table here and identify yourself.
Hello, hi. My name is Jacob Winsec, and I would just like to briefly address the commission about the petition that was just rejected. I understand and I thank the Neighborhood Commission Office for taking the time to thoroughly review signatures provided. As a signee of said petition, I was particularly disappointed that we didn't clear the threshold. But again, I appreciate that this has been a fair, open and transparent process by all parties. I would just like to lay out some concerns that were provided in written testimony to this commission prior to today's meeting that spoke incredibly disparagingly about myself, about other members of the community and the neighborhood board. And I think that goes to why this petition was started. That the conduct of Member Masakian on the Waikiki Neighborhood Board has been entirely inappropriate. He's using, in his testimony that he wrote and through his actions during meetings, he has used his position to humiliate others, to degrade others, to pursue his own personal vendettas over the interests of the community he claims to represent. He does not, I believe, represent the values or the interests of the Waikiki community. And while I hope that he is not reelected to the Neighborhood Board in the coming Neighborhood Elections next year, I would just like to say that I am personally appalled at the testimony that was written and submitted. And I would like to say that this is only further proof that he is not the appropriate or right choice to represent the Waikiki community and the values of my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any hands of the audience here. Are there any, any others? They're not online. Oh, I didn't see that. You come up and identify yourself.
Now, my name is Antonio Biera. I'm here on behalf of, to support Mr. Craig Masakian. I listened to the statement made by the fallen gentleman Jacob here. The fact is, I believe that Mr. Craig Masakian, this, this whole purpose of the recall was based on retaliation. Board of Directors at our building, or at the building I work for, has made two attempts to remove him from the board directors at Kananah. They have plotted and planned against this individual, not only him, but me as well. The fact is, Mr. Masakian has brought up issues and concerns to the association. He's brought up clear, clear concerns of misconduct by the board of directors, misconduct that's going on in the building. I also did investigations and had learned of these, these concerns. The concerns that places the building at risk of life violating building permit, planning permits. Being part of having a contractor, a false or fake contractor coming to play to propose for work to the building. And yet, to my investigation, it determined that that same person that was supposed to be the contractor never existed as a contractor. All this information was brought up to the board of the directors. And the board of directors still didn't listen. What they chose to do was retaliate against Mr. Masakian by coming to this committee, even making threats against him. I've been witness to, in the, in the office where they wanted to make physical threats against him, only because he brought up issues, issues of concerns, issues of liability of building. He is a board member. He has a duty and a responsibility to protect the association. The other board members, I don't know what they're thinking because they don't do the same thing. And you go in and you know you're supposed to have permits to do work in the building, you violate that permit, not once, not twice, but three times, receives a triple fine. Pardon?
Some of your statement.
My some of the statements is this. The purpose of this petition that was submitted was retaliation. Strictly that, retaliation. Both, both of these members are board members of Kananah. Danny Jacob, sitting right there, and the individual in the back of me, Jacob. They're both board members. Both of these people, it was submitted as both proposal, and it was based on retaliation. That is my statement.
Good.
Thank you. Oops.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Here you go.
Okay, thank you.
Patrick Henskey, ever have you? Patrick Henskey?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I do. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'd like to refute what this previous gentleman said. I am a board member on the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. This was not a vendetta against Greg Masakian. It was a true concern that has been present because of his behavior on the board. And I was not part of it, even though I've been accused of it. And I would like to say that unless Mr. Masakian starts to represent his district, then this is not an issue of his condominium board. Rather, it's an issue of the way he does or does not represent District 2. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else? Dylan? I don't see anybody here. I think that's it. Oh, one more?
My name is Ken Jacob. I'm a member of the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. I don't live in Keoneana, although my son does. But I've spent my whole life in public service, on the school board, 22 years in the state legislature, as a judge, as a head of the Department of Labor. And I've never seen one person file so many complaints against what I consider a perfect gentleman. And, you know, at some point, the continuous filing of complaints disrupts the ability of the board to conduct its business. And bad feelings do rise. And I don't know if this board has any powers to deal with that. But from what I've heard, I don't know if it's true or not, but this is the first time in your history that anybody, any single person has filed more than 20, and I don't know the total number. I've never been able to read one of them. But what I understand is nobody else in history has filed this many complaints. And I've also heard these complaints just don't come to you. It comes to a variety of other agencies, which I don't have, for me to have the information to see those complaints. But something has to stop because it's, there was a time where I was on the board before he became on the, he became a member of the board, and then there was after. Since then, we have not been able to conduct business the way we did before. And either it has to stop, or we might as well not even meet. So, so that's my statement. Thank you.
Okay, is there anything?
My name is Gerard Garcia. I'm the one who got this petition going. I did it because I've been attending these meetings myself as a community member. And I don't agree with the way I see a board member of Masakian protecting himself in these meetings. He tries to take over these meetings. He makes disparaging remarks against other people. And, you know, I don't think that's right. So I decided to do something about it. I looked into the rules to find out what can be done about this kind of person. I did this all on my own. Nobody else. All the various people from my building that signed, nobody got them to do this. I think that this is, it's right. I'm sorry if we didn't get enough signatures for you guys. That's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Hey, is there anything else? If not, well, you had your, yeah, maybe she had, if not, maybe we're done already. Come up here. We can't, can't hear you.
The fact that I had to sit there while a number of people, again, made misinformation and impeded my character while I'm sitting behind them with false testimony, in my opinion. I'm just curious if I have a right to make a statement beyond what I said earlier.
We're not taking any testimony on the petition tonight because we don't have a petition in front of us. It was rejected for a lack of, you know, signatures on it. So we're basically done talking about.
That's fine.
The petition. The only reason I ask folks if they wanted to say something because you're all here and they didn't want to, you know, just send you home without having your say or whatever you wanted to say. Everybody that wanted to say something has, you, you said quite a few things already. So.
If I could, Chair, the concern I have is this. You just said exactly what my concern is. I spoke on the petition and I didn't go deep and delve into lots of things at Keoneana. But the people that got up to speed started talking about side issues outside of the petition. So the petition appears to have been submitted by Gerard Garcia. He's a former guard at our condo association. He lives with Jacob. I'm just stating. The concern I have is that a number of people just got up here, including Ken Jacob, and made comments that aren't true. You can't substantiate them. And that's my concern, that I had to sit here and listen to that just now. The news reporter's taken away really quickly. I don't know what she's writing, but we'll see tomorrow, you know, when the paper comes out. And again, you know, I, I serve as president of the Kua council. I'm on four boards. I'm the director of HARA, the Hawaii Alliance for Retired Americans. I just turned 59 recently. I'm trying to help the community. I don't get paid for anything I'm doing. And this is what this commission, in my personal opinion, just allowed to happen. You're the chair. This is what happens at our board meetings, Waikiki Neighborhood Board meetings, lack of deklarum with Member Henskey. She swore it. She said, then quit asshole. I'll say it right here. That's what she said. It's on video record. That's one of my.
Defensive comments.
But that's one of.
So, and you wrap up here, two minutes.
That's one of my concerns, Chair. And if I'm a little bit passionate on that concern, it's because I'm a target constantly for trying to do the right thing and make sure that the board that I serve on for the community is doing things properly. And if the chair of the board can't do it, then that's.
Okay.
Someone else should.
We're, we're gonna move on beyond this agenda item. But before we do, I just wanted to read to folks that are here tonight, Section 214-117 relating to order and forum at table board meetings. And I'll just say this, just two sentences explicitly. All board members shall promote and preserve the order and form of the board's proceedings. Presiding officer of the board, or a majority of the board, may expel any individual whose conduct at the board meetings disruptive, disorderly, contentious, or improper for the conduct of business at the board meeting. Period. That's provision in the neighborhood plan. And that's what, how it addresses order and form. So with that, we're gonna move on to the next item announcements. The next Neighborhood Plan meeting is scheduled for Monday of October 21st, 6:00 PM here, Kapalum, Kapalum Halli, and on Webex. Next, regular meeting of the Neighborhood Commission is scheduled again on Monday of October 28th at 6:00 AM, both on Webex and here at.
both on Webex and here at Kapalom Halling. At this time, I'm gonna adjourn this portion of the meeting, which is the Sunshine portion of the meeting. And the Neighborhood Commission will then move into judicatory matters uh, that it'll discuss this evening. So what that means is everybody that's here, the audience, will have to exit the room and we're going to, uh, our judicatory matters portion of our agenda. So with that, thank you all very much for the time and patience.